Welcome, everybody. Grand Forks City Council Meeting, Monday, June 6th, 2022. Roll call, please. Maureen.
Weigel.
Here.
Doppler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Rammy.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Bean.
Here.
All present, we have a corn.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.3, Mayor's Announcements. Couple of announcements today. We had the Olive Anne groundbreaking, so that was an exciting day. I think we're -- next fall, that downtown hotel will open. Should be a real game changer for Fourth Street and pretty exciting all around. Ms. Lipsch wanted me to get the word out, too. Public Works Department is allowing four free drop-offs at the landfill for city residents only in household quantities. We'll continue to do the spring cleanup, so that service will still be on. But four times throughout the year, you can drop off trash, just bring either your ID or a utility bill, and they'll keep track of that. So that's a great additional service, so happy they were able to figure that out. We've got voting coming up, June 19th. Absentee ballots, they can be picked up at the Grand Forks -- did I say June? June 14th. Absentee ballots, those forms can be picked up at the Grand Forks County or the Secretary of State website. Early voting at the Alara Center starts tomorrow and goes through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Tuesday through Friday, and 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Saturday. And the election will be, obviously, June 14th, and it'll be open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And on Election Day, the voters can vote at any of the four designated election sites in Grand Forks. The designated election sites are the Alara Center, the Icon Hockey Arena, Park District Office, Home of Economy, and Holy Family. And then really exciting here, June 18th, we've got the Grand Forks Air Force Base air show, and it's open to the public. We're expecting anywhere around 25,000 people, so the gates open at 8:30 a.m., and the flying will begin at approximately 11:00 a.m. So if you get a chance, get out there. You're going to have the Thunderbirds, Wings of Blue Vampire Air Shows, Franklin Flying Circus, Shockwave, Blessed FMX, Freeman Air Shows, and the Dan Reeves Air Show. So it should be pretty exciting. Get out there on June 18th. That's all I have for Mayor's Announcements. Two awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
2.1 is the presentation, the Fu Fang USA Due Diligence Update.
Mr. Phelan, please.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. And sure, if you want to maybe dim the lights, if you don't mind. Thank you. I thought we'd update you on the -- all the various activities regarding the development agreement. I'm also going to ask Dan Gossett to kind of join the presentation, and also have Sean Gaddy for me to ask what we've been working on as part of coordination, and of course, all the various department heads over here this evening, too. So with that, as you know, we did -- the City Council did approve the development agreement on February 22nd. It was fully executed with all the various appendices on May 10th. And again, there are over 100 conditions, requirements, and tasks. And what we have also attached to the City Council agenda is all the various -- as part of a spreadsheet, all the various things that we're going to go through. So it's pretty voluminous on that. I'm not going to go through all those in particular, but that's attached to the agreement. Also, as we work with A2S and all the various departments, we attached another agreement where we're kind of going through all the various due diligence items. So those are the three attachments, this PowerPoint, and then two kind of checklists, if you will, that kind of keep track of all that we're working with. We are meeting and working on a week-to-week basis. Generally, we meet on Fridays to kind of go over the progress where we're at on an ongoing Again, these are the various -- regarding the sections and exhibits. And as you know, we've talked a lot about the various master plan that I'm going to go over in a little bit, the financing cost allocations that we're going to further discuss. There was a lot of discussion at the last time we were here regarding some of the planning and zoning items, is that this agreement also calls for utility service agreements on the various utilities that we're going to provide. So that's in Section 5.1. Section 7.1, I'm going to have Mr. Gossett talk about where we're at with the letter of credit, and then the conditions of construction and financing of city infrastructure. These are all the areas that are going to become before you between now and probably over the next six to nine months as we move forward. If you look at these key requirements and tasks, these are what we've been really focused a lot of our energy on. Regarding the site plan itself, Mr. Corman's here, and Fu Fang USA has hired CPS to provide their site plan, so we have been engaging with Mr. Corman and CPS as part of the site plan review and getting that completed. We've gone through planning, plating, we've gone through zoning. Tonight, you're going to talk about annexation, and so that's part of the agreement. So we always provided that. It was going to be the first requirement that we're going to be in front of you moving forward. We continue to work on the raw water supply. And again, we are partnering with the Department of Water Resources with the state of North Dakota, and so we're working through those various needs as part of the design. And again, the state's paying 60% of the design. We are also -- Mr. Bean's brought up the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, so I would anticipate over the next few months, you're going to be seeing our partnering agreements with the Red River Valley Water Supply that will have our various water supplies and how we're going to work through that with the city of Fargo and their metro as part of that. So we're working through that. Wastewater discharge, we continue to work on that. Potable and water supply, you're going to see on tonight's agenda. Gary Fire Chief Lorenz has a mutual aid agreement with East Grand Forks that we've updated so that we can provide interim fire protection until we get the potable and fire water supplies involved. Stormwater discharges, I want to make note because when we looked at this annexation and the zoning is that we were going to move forward with and without Fu Fang. And so as part of that annexation, we are looking to move forward with that stormwater regional pond. I can anticipate that one to be the first infrastructure pieces that will go in. It's generally best to dig ponds in our area in the winter, and so I would anticipate this winter, that'll be the first infrastructure piece that will go in, will be that stormwater pond. Transportation impacts, we anticipate that probably coming before you in July with the finalized report with North Dakota DOT's comments. And from that final report, we anticipate going to the North Dakota DOT and asking for funding cost shares on those various improvements as we move forward. So that's one of the first ones you're going to see. Building inspections and permit requirements, again, because this is such a large project, and it's not often that we work on a wet corn mill, we have asked for the assistance from Black and Beach, and so they're going to provide support to our building inspections department and some of the reviews. And so we've already coordinated with Black and Beach, and we've set up a system so as some of the drawings and building plans come forward, that we can not only share those with our building inspections department, but also with Black and Beach. Solid waste profile, we're very fortunate in Grand Forks to be the owner of the solid waste landfill. And as been discussed at this particular meeting, there's going to be a profile beyond, you know, Minnesota's solid waste, without any solids that have come from their wastewater treatment process in particular. And so we're going to be reviewing any of the needs regarding our solid waste landfill. Right now, they're going to have to work with the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality regarding land application, those sorts of things. That'll be a permit with the state of North Dakota and will not be considered ours. So also, it's really important, we're working on schedules, and so we've got to work in parallel with Fu Fang. And so they have engaged some consultants. I mentioned Mr. Corman and CPS. They have engaged other consultants regarding air permitting and some of the design features that are going to move forward. So it's going to be really critical that we really partner well as we move forward with this particular project. Some of the environmental items that we're working through, air emissions and permitting, they have moved forward with that. My understanding is they've hired a firm called HDR, which is a large national permitting firm that's going to work on the air permitting for this. And again, that'll be another permit they'll work through with the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality. And we have a strong state. Obviously, we have a lot of coal-fired plants, and so that's one area with the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality where we have some really strong regulatory environment with personnel that are working on that. And then visual and thermal plumes, that has been brought up regarding not only the air itself, but the visual plumes so that there's no negative impacts with our airport. And so I anticipate probably in July, we'll bring that forward to City Council because we do have information on that. And it looks like the concerns are rather minimal on that, but you'll see that for yourself. And again, I'll just -- I won't go through all the rest, but there's a complete roster of environmental items that we need to continue to follow through on. Here's what we're -- the strategy that we're working through. So as we receive this information, whether it goes to a city department or consultants, we're reviewing it. We're enviewing the particular regulatory comments and all those sorts of things. Really what our goal is to have outcomes. And so when we work through all the particulars, working with our city consultants, working through our city departments, working with Fu Fang, ultimately, with all those various conditions, we intend to bring back to the City Council under the development agreement our memorandum of understanding. So we all completely understand in all the various categories what we agree to and how it will be served. So you will see, moving through this year and into next, all these various MOUs that will define all the various aspects of the infrastructure, the environmental, and all that we've agreed as we move forward. And the importance of that is certainly, we anticipate if the Fu Fang Wet Corn Mill moves forward, it's going to be here for a long time, and we want to memorialize and document all that we agreed to and on the service perspective. So you should anticipate that. I would anticipate some of the first ones that come out are the wastewater pre-treatment process, and later in the agenda, we're going to ask you to approve moving forward with a wastewater treatment plant CMAR process or construction manager at risk. And so we are moving forward with that process. One of the important parts regarding the Fu Fang project is how we're going to treat their wastewater at the treatment plant. And so that'll be one of the first ones that we'll move forward with. I mentioned the plant thermal emissions review that will move forward, and that's really more -- most applicable to the airport itself. And then finally, the traffic impact study, and Boltman Make is currently conducting that. I think we have most of the final opinions from the North Dakota DOT, and so we anticipate us kind of really having a final review of that. And the second piece of that will be really to go to the DOT and ask for funding partnerships as part of that. Again, the agreement lays out all the various -- and we've talked about as part of the site planning and the annexation and the zoning, all the various aspects and cost shares, that's -- we'll continue to track that. Mr. Gossett has worked through the raw water and the wastewater escrow, and that's that $9-plus million that we're going to help -- Fu Fang was going to help pay upfront for both the water and the wastewater, so we're working through those. And again, just working through all the various water and wastewater utility service agreements. So I just wanted to highlight this one because that came up at the last meeting, is that not only the MOUs, but the agreement calls that we're going to have utility service agreements, and most of them will really be centered on the water and the wastewater, and I won't go through all the particulars. But we will have defined agreements on how we're going to serve them, what the requirements are, and all those various things. One thing that gets brought up a lot is our raw water supply. We're going to take, you know, around 6 million gallons per day from our Red River permit. And currently, you do have agreements and policies on -- in drought mitigation, and certainly, we're going to update those agreements. We're going to incorporate the Red River Valley Water Supply Project. But in all those agreements, human consumption is always at the first. We always sustain that first. Industries' car washes are mitigated, and you'll see that come through as part of this, too. So no one has to be concerned that we're going to allow industry to move forward and harm human consumption as part of that. Maybe I can ask Mr. Gossett, we talked about the letter of credit with the $5 million, and I would ask Mr. Gossett to update us on where we're at with that.
Yep. We've had -- I've had communications with the financial institution that Fu Fang has requested. It's MUFG Bank Limited out of New York City. We've had -- sent the letter of credit, a draft, two drafts of the letter of credit as to what the requirements are going to be. It's about a five-page document. Just waiting to get through some of the nuances on the letter of credit. In the interim, we've also started working on getting independent verification of their qualifications under, I think it's Section 1.46 of the development agreement. They have to -- the financial institution has to be subject to federal banking laws as well as meet certain criteria under standards and pores and Moody's ratings, and we're getting independent verification of both of those requirements. In fact, we got verification earlier today about that bank being subject to banking laws, and I just got something late this afternoon about their rating qualifications, and it appears that they meet those qualifications, so we're working on that. We're not just relying upon the financial institution to tell us that they meet these criteria, we're actually getting third-party review of those items. So that's the status of the letter of credit. I expect that to be done here shortly.
Again, here's some more key requirements that we're working through, and again, you know, working through their infrastructure plans, we need to continue to do that, finalizing these utility service agreements, really looking at these governmental requirements. And we've spent a lot of time on all the various air and other environmental permits, which are noted right there. Most of these permits are going to come from the state of North Dakota. Some will come from the city of Grand Forks, but these are all permits that we need to attain, and they will all enter into the various agreements that we're going to move forward with. The other thing that I stressed last time I was up here is that the City Council, as part of all this various bidding, is that a lot of this will be city infrastructure that's going to require us to come before City Council, if not review these plans and specs with you. At the very least, the bids will have to be approved. We'll have to come back with the funding strategy and any of the rate impacts. So you will see that as part of, as we move forward with all these various aspects, along with the MOUs and the various agreements. We are working on the natural gas agreement. Currently, the state of North Dakota has moved forward with one submittal, and that's from One Oak or Viking Pipeline. And so I anticipate either in June or July that the Industrial Commission will final review that agreement and approve it to serve Fu Fang and various areas in Grand Forks County. So more to come on that. The other thing, we've talked about these other governmental requirements that may apply, and when we say that may apply, and those things that we haven't specified, they could be federal, they could be state, they could be local. And I just want to note, because it keeps coming up, is the CFIUS review, which is foreign investment review. Mr. Gossett has engaged a DC law firm to have a third-party review of that, and I would ask him to give us an update on where we're at with that.
Yep. We've retained the law firm, Cooley Law Firm out of Washington, DC, and specifically Bridget Reinkin will be working, providing an opinion. I've sent her the development agreement. She's going to provide an opinion as to the application of CFIUS and whether it would be a governmental requirement, because if you recall, under the development agreement, they have to meet or satisfy all the governmental requirements, and we've got a non-exhaustive list of governmental requirements that we've enumerated, but it doesn't mean that that's the only item. And because that -- this has been brought up, we've hired the Cooley Law Firm. The significance of Bridget Reinkin is that she actually worked for CFIUS for a couple of years recently, so she's got some knowledge about the -- how this works in the review process. And we expect that the -- an opinion letter will be issued by the end of this month. At least, that's the targeted timeframe for the opinion letter.
Thank you. The one particularly note on that last bullet is public safety, health, and welfare. So that's kind of our all-encompassing study. If there's anything regarding this plan from a public safety first responder, that's kind of that study that we're working with Black and Beach. If there's something that we ought to have incorporated into that, into a review and a study and an agreement, that's that kind of catch-all that we're working under. All the things that are not hard infrastructure-related, but things we ought to require Fu Fang to have as part of their facility, that's that overall study. And so that's part of looking at similar industries, what they have required in other cities and/or what they should, whether it's a kind of a building design, whether it's a training, all those kind of things. That's going to go into that particular agreement. With that, Mayor, that's where we're at today, and we'll continue to give you updates, but I would say in July will be the first time, as I noted, that you will see actual documents that will come in front of you that we will ask you to approve and affirm as we move forward with the Fu Fang project.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Phelan and Mr. Gossett from council? Mr. Bean, please.
First of all, Mr. Phelan, thanks very much for all the information. I think what you identified shows the complexity of this project and all of the attention to detail that we're trying to get to. It's massive. I don't think we've ever experienced anything like this before, and I don't know if we ever will again. Everything from a development agreement that's now, I don't know, 100 pages long, or how many pages it is with all the attachments that are with it, you know, to trying to get a full grasp and understanding of what's going on. It's a lot has happened in four months, really. And as we finish some of the decisions up today, it moves to another phase. What level of, I don't know, control or input does a city council have going forward? I know we wanted to do the development agreement for the purposes of getting answers to questions that we have, to do more studies, to be able to make what I'm thinking of as informed decisions as we go forward. There appears like there's a lot of decisions yet to be made, but it also feels like this thing is moving down the tracks, trying to move forward. So I just have a basic question. How do we continue to have meaningful input into this process? Do we have the ability to change the direction if, in fact, there is something that comes along? What authority does City Council have moving forward?
Mayor Pachansky and Councilmember Bean, I'll answer first, and I'll let Mr. Gossett. I think you have -- I think you have most -- you're the governing board. I think most of the agreements and approvals, we're going to bring back through this board. If you have some ideas of what ought to be reviewed further or some other issues, you're the governing board, you should let us know administratively, and we'll take another look. So for example, the CFIUS review, I know it's been brought up a few times. In the meantime, we've contracted with somebody to do a review so that we could settle that issue, and if there's something further that needs to move forward. I think if you look at Mr. Gossett put together an Excel spreadsheet of all the various that's attached to tonight's agenda, all the various sections and describing what they are, all of those are going to have to come back to the City Council, and it's, I don't know how many pages, but it's a lot of pages of items that have to come back through, and it's almost -- it's pretty daunting of what has to happen. But no, if there's something further, I can't think of anything further that has been brought up or has been brought up by the City Council that is not contained on that list and that we intend to work on over the next several months. And maybe sometimes I get this question, you know, why didn't we have all this stuff studied and then make a decision? And the reason why is that we didn't want to spend millions of dollars in advance without any financial protections, without a development agreement, so that if we reach an end here in the next several months and Fu Fang doesn't move forward, we'd have no financial protections. Now we have financial protections. We have an agreement so that if we spend the next nine months reviewing all these various aspects and something comes up as part that we can't move forward with the project, Fu Fang decides that we don't want to do this anymore. At least, we have that $5 million letter of credit that we can reimburse ourselves. Otherwise, we would really be out with our necks out on some of these things. So that's the reason why we did these things, and I think that development agreement really demonstrated both sides will work in good faith, and number two, that we would be motivated to work in a serious type of manner. And it was another note that the project is for real, and that we're going to try to get it across the finish line. And so I think that's what -- I think the City Council has all that, but I'd have Mr. Gossett further add.
Sure. I would echo what Mr. Phelan talked about, and I think tonight is a perfect example. You've got the Agassiz agreement, relocation agreement, that's subject to your approval. It's a bought-of $50,000 or $60,000 agreement that's being sought to be approved. I would anticipate that the letter of credit will be brought to your attention and presented to you before it gets finalized. All those things, I expect that you're going to be active, and we're going to be presenting these things to the council. I put together that spreadsheet for the very purpose of making sure that we track things, and that when something gets completed, my intention is it's completed after council has had an opportunity to review and provide input and approve those items. If I could, do we have like a critical path timeline of what's going to happen, when, as we go through the remainder of this process, to make sure we're informed and aware of what's coming forward?
Yep. Mayor Pachansky, we do. As part of the development agreement, there is an attached GAN chart or critical path chart that will continue to be updated. But so I sent out the development agreement to you, and as part of that, one of the attachments in the appendix is that GAN chart, and obviously, that'll continue to be updated as we move along.
Yeah, because we could look at that, cash flow and other things. I think those are the responsibilities of the City Council to be able to do. I do have to say, and I'll say this again, that back in, I guess it was November, I had sent you and the mayor a list of questions and concerns that I had. I think quite a few of those have been a part of your studies. I appreciate that. I've sat in and listened to a few of your study reviews. I think you've done a very good job of trying to address every one of those and to follow through with the study, and the staff and consultants have worked hard. I've asked you about the communications, and you've implemented some things on communication that you wouldn't have anyway. And the risk assessment, although I think it needs to be expanded, has also been included, right? So those are things that I've asked about, that I feel confident that the city is working on. The raw water issue is one that I've had questions on, not only the water availability, but also, I think, the means of delivering water. I want to know what ability do we as city council members still have to address those kinds of issues, because that's probably near and dear to me. I have many years of experience in that, and I have definitely have questions on that. I want to know what ability do I have to see those questions through?
Mayor Pachansky and Councilmember Bean, I think, number one, the utility. We're going to end up with a utility agreement that's going to specify how we're going to serve the raw water. We're going to update the drought mitigation plan. That'll be a City Council approval. That's in an ordinance form. And then finally, we're going to have to go back to the North Dakota Department of Water Resources and the State Water Commission when we get a final design to ask for the next dollar amount of 60% cost share for the actual construction of the project. So you're going to see that through the bidding process. You're going to see it through the drought mitigation plan you're going to approve, and you're going to see it through the utility agreement specifically for raw water and what the requirements of both sides are.
What I would like to see at some point beyond that is the level of risk assessment that's going to be associated with raw water availability and what that means for the community. And I know studies are being -- taking place now that will address that. I know they're not complete, or they're complete, but they probably need to be have further questions addressed. That's one thing that I guess that I think has to be a part of this process. Do you see that that's going to be inclusive?
That will. And I think you're going to see that two ways. You're going to see the utility agreement, you're going to see it in the drought management plan, and you're also going to see it when we bring the partnering agreements back to you as part of the Red River Valley Water Supply in advance of the next legislative session. It's going to be in that agreement, too. And, you know, if you look at the, you know, Ken and I have been in some meetings, really what Grand Forks needs in a 1930s-era drought, we need to make sure Fargo has water, because as Fargo has water, that means they're going to discharge to the Red River, which means we're going to have enough water come our direction. And so Fargo's always been the main driver of the Red River Valley Water Supply Project, so we should be really for support Fargo in their need for the project, because if they have water, we're going to have an agreement that they need to discharge so much to the Red River, and then we're going to treat that. And that was the other part of having a robust water treatment plant that we have. So no matter what the water quality is, whether it's in the Red Lake or Red River, then we're going to be able to treat that water, not only for Grand Forks, but the region. And so I think all those agreements are going to play in, and I think we're coming in really at a good time. And I think everyone agrees that with that natural gas pipeline that eventually is going to get here from the Bakken, that we need a backup water supply in eastern North Dakota, Fargo in particular, and we're probably the second priority, that it's really a great time, because we want to continue to grow our economies here, and whether it's for agro business or drought mitigation. But that's generally just so everyone, you know, what I've seen and what I think Ken has seen is that we need to make sure water is always in -- gets to Fargo, because if water doesn't get to Fargo, they're in serious concerns, and we need to make sure our state legislature knows that.
Well, Todd, you and I were in a meeting last week on the project participation agreement that will be extremely important for us, because if that's done wrong, we have problems. If it's done right, we do well. So my request to you is that I have my continued involvement in this process and to address the things that I want. I don't need to do it here in front of everybody, that we have some commitment to do that, because if there are issues, I'm going to bring them forward.
I agree. We've had some strenuous conversations about this, Councilmember Bean, and we show up here every Monday evening, so there's really nowhere to hide. And we show up here every Monday evening, so there's really nowhere to hide, so we always got to keep coming back here and updating you, because if we're not doing it, you're going to, you're going to let us know every Monday where we're at with these sorts of things, so.
Well, this isn't personal between anybody. This is just the data and the facts.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further questions for Mr. Phelan or Mr. Goss? All right, why don't we move on to item 2.2? Mr. Dorsted.
2.2 is a budget process timeline update. I don't have a formal presentation for you tonight, but I did attach for you a copy of the budget timeline for 2023. As you can see from that timeline, much work is being done on the budget. Departments have either submitted their budget requests or are working on them. Human Resources is working on salary plan information and inputting, as well as administrations continuing to meet regarding requests, including operational salary capital needs. Mayor has been meeting with departments. Column the farthest to the right on the attachment that you have to the agenda is of particular note to you. Those are the dates that are important for, we've tried to time these when city council meets. And then, I mean, going down that, we plan to come to you on June 20th with the salary plan presentation, just an update on growth indicators that we're looking at. You should have received an invitation from Ms. Rosberg with a joint meeting with the Alaris Commission on July 13th, and then ultimately, we plan to present the mayor, plans to present the budget to you on July 18th, which should be good timing as all these meetings come, when we welcome two new city council members for discussion with the budget. And with the presentation, it should give plenty of time if city council members decide to have work sessions before ultimate preliminary approval of the budget August 1st and final approval then on September 19th. We will have, we slated the week of July 25th for your joint meeting you have with the, for the Grand Forks, East Grand Forks Wastewater Interconnect Advisory Committee. The date and time of that is yet to be determined, but we're looking at targeting the week of July 25th for that. If you have any questions, my mom was available, phone, email, stop in. But if you have any questions tonight, I am available as well.
Thank you, Ms. Dorsted. Any questions? All right, thank you. Moving on to three, public hearings and second readings of ordinances.
3.1 is public hearing and determination of protest on petition to vacate a portion of North 32nd Street.
All right. Mr. Brooks, do you have anything further on that or just open the public hearing? All right, we'll open the public hearing item 3.1. Anyone here to speak on the petition to vacate portion of North 32nd Street? All right, seeing no one, public hearing is closed. Open up to council for comment or motions. Mr. Sandy, got a motion to approve from President Sandy, second from Mr. Weigel. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
3.2 is public hearing and determination of protest, a resolution of annexation, PNE Highway 81.
Thank you. Before you start, anyone else had any cards? The public hearing permit's open, you can also step up there if you don't have a card, but I've got a handful up here. If there's any other ones, bring them forward. Go ahead, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. So on April 18th, city council approved moving forward with the annexation to, at that point, mail out notices and as was provided for in state statute, we mailed out notices to those properties, that ownerships. And we also advertised in the Grand Forks Herald. The protests filed by the city deadline on May 27th were on, attached in your agenda packet for this item. Here's the properties. There were 36 that were submitted by the deadline on May 27th. And we also did a visual for you, just to show you where that sits in the annexation area. So.
[inaudible] Thank you.
So in red is where those locations are. In total, the square footage, or acreage rather, of the area is 76.96 acres. The total annexation area was 585.18 acres, and that came to a protest area of 13.5, 13.15%, which was less than the 25% required, which would have pushed it to a mediation process. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Goss, City Attorney.
They were, yeah, he, Mr. Brooks mentioned there were 36 protests or objections that were submitted. I think there are actually 38, two of which were not accounted for. One was submitted by Dennis Cadillac. He submitted both a protest document and then his attorney also submitted a separate letter. And I'll address the issue with Mr. Cadillac first. The other one was Falconer Township, and I'll get to that in a second. Mr. Cadillac's attorney had suggested that he was an owner of the property to be annexed, and he should have received notice of the annexation with the other owners of property within the territory. And he was citing to North Dakota Century Code 32-15-03.2. That particular statute deals with an eminent domain proceeding, and it reads that no transfer to the state of North Dakota or any of its political subdivisions for property for highway purposes shall be deemed to include any greater interest than an easement. And if there is, then the landowner gets reconveyed, fee simple, to the highway. And the contention by Mr. Cadillac is he's an owner to the center of US Highway 81, because he owns, I can't remember, Block 1 of, I can't get the legal, the proper, Block 1 Iden-Kanoff addition to Grand Forks, which is next to Highway 81. That statute does generally follow the principle in North Dakota that when there's a highway, generally speaking, the landowner owns to the center of the roadway. There are exceptions, however, that weren't mentioned by Mr. Cadillac or in his protest, one of which is under Century Code 240118. It speaks to the state, for state highway purposes, can purchase, acquire, take over, or subject to Section 321501, which is an eminent domain statutes condemn property and any all lands in fee simple. So there's a statute that does allow estate to acquire by fee simple. Also, in researching the matter a bit, there are cases that touched on this topic. There was one case, it's Lealeem versus Williams County, where there was a deed that was to be conveyed to the county for a highway, and it included 40 feet in width, except the 33 feet along section line. And the argument in the case was the state owned that seven feet, that additional seven feet. And the North Dakota Supreme Court said it didn't. It had to look at the terms of the deed, found the deed ambiguous, and concluded the property owner owned fee simple under that road. However, I found another case, Hox Detler versus United States. It was a claims court case, federal case, that dealt with property here in North Dakota. And in that particular case, the court noted that when there is a transfer of property, make sure I get the right, that the statute that Mr. Cadillac is relying upon doesn't apply when there is a transfer by deed. So there is exceptions. It's not, it doesn't always apply. I had requested information from Mr. Cadillac, specifically if there is an eminent domain case that dealt with US Highway 81 or something that showed the conveyance of this property. I didn't receive that. What I received was a plat for this, for this particular property. And that plat is important, and I don't know if, Mr. Brooks, if you've got that. The plat is important, because if you can, you can see there's US Highway 81, and along there, there's about a 15-foot area that says it's dedicated for service road. Block 1 is what Mr. Cadillac owns. The importance of that is in the dedication for the plat. It talked about that that area, they were dedicating to streets and service roads to the public, for the public use forever. That's significant, because there is a North Dakota Supreme Court case that was decided in 2020 that talked about when there is a platted land, and this was a case that was in, I believe it was a county, Montreal County, where the property was platted, there is a dedicated road. The owner that platted the property asserted that he owned under the platted roads. And the North Dakota Supreme Court citing to Century Code 40-50.1-05 said, when you plat and you dedicate roads like that, you are divested of ownership of those roads. And so the dedicated road for a service road, it's been divested of the owner of Block 1. The other significance is that, I did some research with respect to Mr. Cadillac's deed, what he acquired the property in 92, and he mentioned that he had acquired it in April of 1992. He took the property subject to dedications, and that's a dedication the public road is, he's subject to. The other thing that is of significance, if you take a look at the plat, the total square footage noted for Block 1 is 183,859 square feet. That area would be, would not encompass the entire area of going all the way to US Highway 81, because that would be about 200 square feet. So it was contemplated that Block 1 would not encompass the dedicated service road. So based upon that, and if you take a look at the annexation area, the annexation area has a small jog, and it picks up the, and that's because it's picking up that service road, which was divested through the plating process. So my recommendation to Mr. Brooks, that Mr. Cadillac's property not be included as a sufficient protest, because he's not an owner of land within the annexation territory. Even if he was, I think there was an argument that he didn't get notice. I just want to point out that the protest that was submitted by Mr. Cadillac mirrored all the other protests. There was form evidently used by all the people that submitted a protest. It was identical to everybody that was submitted, so I'm not sure what the harm is. And finally, if you take a look at the numbers, even if you include the four acres that Mr. Cadillac asserts it would make, it doesn't get you to the 25% marker. With respect to Falconer Township, they also submitted a letter from their attorney, or excuse me, this came from Falconer Township. It was sent to me by their attorney in Bismarck. I just want to point out a couple of items, a couple of arguments. One, I don't believe the township is a owner that can be, submits a protest. And the reason I say that, if you take a look at the statute, we are to provide notices to owners of the resolution and how to file a protest. In comparison, the statute provides that we are to provide notice to a township in the county of the hearing date, not how to protest. So there is a difference between a township that is affected by the annexation versus an owner of property. Second, they make the argument that the annexation area isn't adjacent or contiguous to the city. Our statute, the, requires that to annex the property has to be contiguous or adjacent. The North Dakota Attorney General, in interpreting the statute where there is a petition, has the same language, contiguous or adjacent. And the North Dakota Attorney General has concluded that it's contiguous as long as there's actual contact with the boundaries of the city, at least to the extent of touching at a common corner. This does. At numerous spots, it touches a common corridor with respect to the city. So that, the contention that it's not contiguous is not accurate, it's not correct, based upon the North Dakota Attorney General's opinion. The other item that I want to address is in the Falconer Township objection, they note, we're not annexing the Corinta property, and I think we've talked about that already, that there's an agreement that precludes the city from annexing the property at this point, so we couldn't, couldn't do that. I won't get into the other potential arguments by, or the arguments by Falconer Township, I'll leave that up to Mr. Brooks, but it's not my, it's my recommendation that it not be counted as far as the number of protests that are needed to get to that 25% with respect to Falconer Township. Mr. Brooks?
Lastly, we do have an updated staff recommendation in the staff report, finding and determining that because of the protest filed by the owners was less than one quarter of the territory proposed to be annexed, and in turn, there was an absence of protests filed by owners of more than one-fourth of the territory proposed to be annexed as the date of adoption of the resolution of annexation. The territory described in the resolution of annexation shall become part of the city of Grand Forks, North Dakota, and directing the certification with the attached copy of the resolution of annexation and with the attached survey of annexation map be promptly filed and recorded with the Grand Forks County North Dakota Recorder.
All right, anything further from Mr. Brooks? Mr. Phelan?
Mayor Pachansky, we did inquire if, as you move forward, and if you do annex this property, we did have meetings a couple weeks ago with all the various city departments regarding servicing this area. So your police department, your fire department, your public safety answering point are prepared from a first response to begin servicing this area. And obviously, there is a MOU later in the agenda with East Grand Forks. Also followed up with Public Works regarding follow-up on all the various service aspects. I would anticipate from a utility bill perspective, we'll work over the summer to get those moving, but I just want to assure you that if you do approve this this evening, those departments that are involved in the essential first response are prepared to service this area.
All right, thank you, Mr. Phelan. Now we're going to open up the public hearing, item 3.2. I got some names here, but feel free to step up. Why don't we start with, if there's anybody that is an owner in there, they wanted to go first, just for time's sake, give them the opportunity to go first. If there's an owner of land in that annexation period, please feel free to step up to the All right, I'll go through the names I've got here. Dr. Barber, did you want to speak on this item? Because we'll have citizen comments later as well, but feel free.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm honored to appear before you. I'd like to thank Mr. Vain in particular for bringing up questions. It's very laudable. I hope with all my heart those questions are consistently honored throughout this process. I'm not a property owner of the annexation area, however, I am a property owner about a mile away in the second oldest part of Grand Forks. Fortunately, very near St. Michael's Church, which I hope bless is my property. With respect to the annexation, as a general rule, I, as I've mentioned before, grew up in the area very close to where the actual office of Fu Fang USA is, that's Wheaton, Illinois. We are always notified, in my village alongside Wheaton, to, of anything that occurs in our community, be it street cleaning or street widening. We don't have to own the property. In my case, we're adjacent to the street. We never fortunately had to worry about whether or not we owned part of the street. However, had I been more trained at the time, I probably would have thought of that. But when they widened the street next to us and took a lot of our property, we all just went along with it, probably because we felt we had no choice. But there is a very clear statute in this case, saying that owners do own half of the road, but even if there wasn't, the question- road, but even if there wasn't, the question of notice is standard in communities for minor activities. This is a major activity. This is an annexation, not only a property, it's property that is going to be owned by a foreign entity, that's scheduled to be owned by a foreign entity, which has not come to pass yet, fortunately. But I find it appalling that notice is something that's treated with such completely lack of concern for these property owners. I don't know how you can even make these statements that notice is not important. I find it extremely insulting. As I find it extremely insulting, that ever since my aunt lived here in the 40s, and my mother, there's been ice on the street and in front of my property, which has put life and limb in harms way every year. And still, since Mr. Phelan was in charge of Public Works, that policy has not changed, and people still put life and limb in harms way. And Mr. Phelan is now in charge of this project, which is supposed to affect our entire city. And as I fell on the ice, which Mr. Phelan's office never sought to remove, and none of the residents in this town are thought to be important enough to have salt or sand put on the ice in front of their homes, I don't see how that man can even be in charge of directing this project. The other thing I would like to correct while I'm up here is the fact that it has been stated numerous times by Mr. Phelan and others that we will not have Chinese employees in this Chinese plant because the State Department will disallow it. Well, that is just not true. I have a list here of the actual types of visas which we, the Chinese-owned company, can apply for now for their unbuilt factory, okay? So, the list of the visas that they can pick from include the National Interest Waiver and immigrant visa for highly skilled individuals in fields that will benefit the United States. So, as we all know, we already have an employment shortage in this town. We do not have employees to fill the jobs we already have. So, any company, be it Chinese or whomever, if they come to this town, all they have to do is say, "We don't have enough employees. We need to hire employees that are skilled in a particular field. This particular field will be running a wet corn milling plant, allegedly at this point. Who knows? They can decide to, I don't know, make jet fuel out of corn." And they can easily say to the State Department, "We need these employees. We don't have enough specialized employees in Grand Forks." And the State Department, they could even sue for it. They can say, "Well, if you have no employees and you need employees, you can hire Chinese employees." So, don't ever say to me or us again, the lie that we can't hire Chinese employees, because that is a lie, because they can and they will. And the second kind of visa that they can hire Chinese employees with is an L-1A and an L-1B visa. It's a non-immigrant visa for executives, managers, and employees with specialized knowledge of multinational companies. Then there's the J-1 visa, a non-immigrant visa for students and trainees. And then there is the H-2B visa sponsorship, a non-immigrant visa for short-term, non-agricultural positions. So, please, spare us the insult of ever saying that they can't hire employees from China. And please, try to spare the residents of Grand Forks the insult of telling property owners of longstanding who own businesses, they do not have to be notified of an annexation adjacent to their property. It's insulting, it's un-American, and it's, I believe, illegal. Thank you for your time, much appreciated.
Thank you, Dr. Barber. Mr. Cadillac, please.
Hello. And everybody knows who I am. My attorney is here with me, and I wish for him to speak, but what you guys are pulling here is, you're pulling from strings, because I'm going to give you a couple of facts, okay? Fortieth was moved, because the line where Fortieth was isn't where Fortieth is now. That was moved during the dike. Part of my land was taken during the dike. But also, when they built the dike, they moved the highway, and the highway was moved onto my property, and it sits on my property, because the county, and I got letters from the county, made me move a sign that sat there since I built my building, and they made me move it because it was too close to the center of the highway, which proves that the highway was moved. But you can get some surveyors or whoever you want, but you're not getting away with this.
Mr. Ross?
And please don't hate the way I speak for them. I'm used to you people, he's not.
Good evening. My name is Ross Nielsen with Nielsen Brown Law. I represent Mr. Cadillac. Mr. Gostad mentioned the letters that we exchanged regarding his written protest. I haven't had a chance to review the legal arguments that he set forth, so I'm just going to stick with what I know here. It's our contention, and we think the statute clearly provides that Mr. Cadillac does own up to the center line. The annexation by resolution statute in the Century Code clearly provides that there has to be procedural due process, that notice must be provided. It's a shell statute, it's not an option. One thing that's being forgotten here is, is that ignoring Mr. Cadillac's property, look at all the other properties that align Highway 81. By the resolution, that would not include those properties, and those properties haven't also been provided notice. They are entitled to procedural due process under the statute, just like Mr. Cadillac is. They haven't been given the opportunity to protest against this, so it's our contention that to the center line on both sides of Highway 81, the property along there is owned by those property owners. They're entitled to notice, they're entitled to the chance to protest under procedural due process, and via, clearly, under North Dakota law. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Spicer? Allison?
Hi, Ally Spicer, 519 North Washington, state. I just have some questions. So, you guys had met with Pottinger, correct? Pottinger? Bo, you met with Pottinger?
Do you have some comments? Yes, we've met with Pottinger.
I have a question for you. Did you meet with them?
Yes, we did.
Okay, where's the paperwork?
Where's the paperwork from what?
That you had met with them and what you discussed.
We've gone through another route to a CFIUS review now, through the attorney.
When will we get that, so that we can see it?
Should be by the end of the month.
End of the month, okay. So, the same with the FBI meeting?
A report from the FBI meeting?
You had a meeting with the FBI?
Yeah, we had that month, well, more than a month ago, that's correct.
Okay, so we'll get all of that here soon, coming up, to see what they say?
I would imagine if the FBI has something to say, yes.
Can you imagine, or yes or no?
I don't speak for the FBI.
Okay. You speak for this project though, correct, most of you? A yes or no answer for once would be fantastic. We want that information. We have a right to that information.
Any further comments?
Yes or no?
Yes or no to what, ma'am?
Are we going to get that information?
If the information comes to us from the FBI, we will pass it along, just like everything else.
Thanks.
I want to make sure I, Orin Shrank, can I say that correctly?
I'm Orin Shrank, the owner of Orin's Motorsports, and I just want to say that I officially am against the annexation of my property. In the time that I've come up from nothing, started with nothing, I've paid for my own water lines out there, paid to bore the gas lines out there, everything. Nobody's ever handed out anything to us. We've come up from nothing. So, why should we have to pay for someone else to come in and get something for free? That's all I have to say.
Mayor Bojinski, President Sandy, and City Council members, thanks for this opportunity. I'm here on behalf, I'm the Chair of the Chamber Board this year, and the Chamber does support phase one of the development agreement process, which allows us to further fact-finding and study. The EDC and the city have done an excellent job with this process. There have been plenty of opportunity for input and questions. Thank you to the city officials for working hard to get answers needed. The Chamber supports all local businesses, and we want to thank you for attending our March 30 Chamber hosted meeting with the businesses impacted by the proposed annexation that we held at the Chamber. You met with us and also listened and acted on the concerns. The Chamber will continue to be part of the community education process in getting pertinent information out to over 1,000 members and 3,000 people in our database. Closing Grand Forks needs to continue to be business-friendly and build infrastructure, bridges, all fronts, and grow the community strategically. I've been in Grand Forks for 36 years, import from Thief River, lived all 36 years in Riverside Park or University Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kenville. Ms. Carlson?
Is this very specific to the annexation?
Yeah, I've got a few. Do you want to speak during the citizen comments?
I would, later.
Okay. I got, and Gerald Gork, did you want to do the same, or do you want to speak now, sir?
Do you speak now?
Please. And I got Brianna Hospart too, did you want to? That one said it was for the citizen comments, all right. Please, sir.
My name's Gerald Gork, I'm president of Sons of Liberty. We drove 300 miles here today to protest against this, whatever you call this thing, Fu Feng?
Fu Feng.
Fu Feng, whatever. You smug asses stand up there and you do this to the citizens here, how rude. How do you sit there and deny the right for these people to have a vote, to have a voice, to have anything? The township should come before any city matters, and you reject the township's rules and laws? And you guys sit there and think you're the wise guys here? Yeah, you're being wise guys all right, that's what you are. This is complete and total bullshit what you're doing to the people in your own city, and you should all be fired completely. I'm going to tell you something. Few years ago, you guys damn near lost your Air Force base. You fought hard to keep this Air Force base, and now you want to turn it over to a foreign entity, a Chinese company, and give them $82 million to do this, when they're putting in, what, 14 million dollars they're putting in? What's up with that? How? Why don't you use your own money here in North Dakota? We have a legacy fund, very wealthy state. Why don't we use that money instead of bringing some foreign entity in here? And you bring it right next to the Air Force base, so they can infiltrate everything that our military does? That's exactly what this is all about. If you guys can't see that, then you're working for the Chinese. And another aspect, another reason you should all be fired, is there's no sense in anyone of you sitting on a board when you want to promote Chinese government in our own state. You sit here and you put down a high-ranking official with the military? You think you know more than the military does what's going on? Who the hell do you think you are?
Mr. Gork, please, please address the board. Mr. Gork, please address the board.
I can address him, he is part of this, I can address him too.
He's not elected, please address.
I could give a shit less, he's the one promoting this. I will direct whoever the hell I want to. You want to laugh at me? You want to laugh at me again? Laugh at me one more time, I'll come across this table. You shut the hell up. I have got the floor, don't I? Do I have the floor?
Sir?
Yes.
You are not allowed to disrespect and speak in that matter and threatening matter.
You disrespect the people in your city every day.
Sir, I'm going to ask that you can continue to speak, but you're going to have to tone it down.
Quit disrespecting and disrespecting you. You guys pull this shit, put a cornmill plant in there, and give these people the money. Why? I just, I simply want to know, why? What's your skin in the game? Why do you want the Chinese here? I want everyone of you to answer me, why? Why do you want them here? Who wants to start?
Do you have any further comments?
Who wants to start? That's my comment.
Mr. Gork, any further comments tonight?
Nobody wants to, nobody wants to say nothing? Nobody wants to give me an answer? Why? Because I'm just some piece of shit, lowlife? That's what you think of your citizens, because you won't give them a voice.
Mr. Gork?
You speak in the truth.
Please.
Huh? Listen, listen to the people behind us. Why do you think?
People don't want the Chinese here.
Nobody does.
Not next door.
Nobody in the state wants it.
Not our town.
Nobody wants them in the whole state. Nobody wants it. We all fought to keep an Air Force base, and now you're going to let these guys come right next to it. Guys aren't using your heads. This isn't about some cornmill plant. We can build that ourselves in 12 acres of ground, and they got 370 acres? What do you think's going to happen with 6 million gallons of water coming in there? It ain't for cornland. Think about it.
Thank you, Mr. Gork. We got Mr. Spruill.
Mayor, council members, thanks for having me speak. Nobody likes annexation, as I was annexed a few years ago in the South End. I didn't like it, but it made me think of something. It happened 39 years ago at D&amp;D Truck Repair on 3056 North Washington. I had an office across Berkstrom Electric at that time, working for a company. The building caught on fire. Grand Forks Fire Department came out within about three minutes, they obstructed the young man that died. They pulled him out because he was burning. They pumped her engine, and they left. They backed up and left. They didn't leave the premises, but they backed up and did what they could do, because they pumped all their water out. So, then we got fire protection from Manville, East Grand Forks, Amaretto, and Thompson. They came, they put a tub out, and they fought the fire. But by the time they got there, a half hour later, the complete building was a total loss. So, it made me think that when you have a community, when you have a business so close to Grand Forks, is there value when you're annexed into a city, regardless of what's going to happen? Yes, when we got annexed in, we no longer saw a sheriff, we had private, we had the city police driving through every day. We got fire protection during the flood. They put an engine out there because we are road flooded out. So, that has a lot of value. So, when you look at annexation, does anybody like it because it changes your tax profile? No. But your long-term effects that it has for your business, it also impacts your insurance. Your insurance gets cheaper. So, it does make a difference. That's the impact of annexation and the benefit when you're annexed into a city such as Grand Forks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lunsford, did you want to? I got one more name, but you can go now if you want, please. Or, sorry, Mr. Phil Kramer, sorry.
I'm going to call Mr. Lunsford.
Yeah. Company, not the name, there you go. Please, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Phil Kramer, I am the Chairman of the Falconer Township Supervisors. We did file an objection. I take a little issue with some of the things that Attorney Gostad said about that on there. Yes, we're not property owners of the annexation area, but I think we do have some skin in the game as being losing properties, property owners and businesses out of the township of Falconer, okay? Significant hit to tax revenue for Falconer Township. You're going to have significant revenue loss for the Ferry Township Fire Protection District. You're also going to have some significant loss of revenue for the water service out there with the legacy water users, okay? We were told that we need to get a protest in, and we were willing to do that, very willingly, because we need to be at the game, at the table. If this went to any mediation, or if it goes to administrative law judge, we have an objection posted, okay? Now, we're not left out in the dark anymore, hopefully. We still don't like it. We feel that the city's encroaching upon more and poorer of our township. With this annexation, the city extraterritorial zoning then moves north, and the city will control at least two-thirds of my township. Not very agreeable for a lot of my residents that are already grimacing at having to deal with a township zoning and a township permit, now they're going to deal with the city zoning and city permit. City zoning does not take into account some of the things that we're encountering in the rural areas of North Grand Forks, and we end up in front of the zoning, or the beginning variances, and proving that we're just not downtown Grand Forks, we don't need to follow all those rules, okay? We'll follow very closely any further developments that happen with Fu Feng, because we have concerned citizens about noise. concerned citizens about noise, light pollution, smell. We also have one that's concerned about the flight patterns in and out of the airport. He works for the airport, okay? What about plumes? What about everything else? There's a lot of things that I laud you, Keith, and all you people there, and that you've done quite a bit of homework. Not everything, though. You've got to keep moving. You have to prove to us that you have our best interests at stake. I don't think you have yet. So we protest. We'll be watching closely, and if there's anything that we can do to try and mitigate any damages or any long-term ill will for our township, we'll be willing to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coachman, are you back there? Do you want to speak now, or?
I can go ahead and speak now. Hello, lady and gentlemen of the City Council. I just have a couple of questions. I have sent an email to you, Mr. Gostad. Are you planning on answering those questions?
No.
You're not going to answer any other questions?
No, because you're looking for legal advice.
No. I was clarifying, not legal advice. Okay? So the questions I have is, can the county people have a petition also for against Fu Fang or for Fu Fang? That's not a legal advice.
I'd recommend that you seek your own legal counsel to get the answer to that, Mr. Coachman.
Okay. What about on the petitions that you have already done? Who authorized you to do those petitions?
Again, I'd recommend you seek legal advice.
Who authorized you to have the law enforcement to work for you to validate the petitions?
My answer is the same, Mr. Coachman. Seek legal advice.
That's not a legal question.
Yes, so...
Mr. Coachman, do you have any comments, please?
No, I guess not, since I have sent the emails to everyone on the City Council, and only two of you responded, and one piggybacked. And if the city attorney's not going to answer questions that are general questions about the petition, on how to do a legal petition, and what is, what's the use? I mean, you're not, you're not helping the people. And thank you, Joe, for saying what you're saying, because you proved the point.
All right, any further comments on the public hearing?
Yeah, I'd like to speak, Lonnie.
Please, sir.
Lonnie Leek, from our radio again. I don't claim to be like Cincinnatus that got off a tractor to come in today.
Come up to me, the mic there, Mr. Leek.
I say I don't claim to be like Cincinnatus that got off a tractor to come in today. But I'd like to make perhaps some esoteric remarks. First of all, one not-so-esoteric. Kevin Kramer, in a radio interview with WDAY Radio, mentioned about the possibility of a Chinese espionage threat to the Grand Forks Air Force Base, but he also said, "We don't need China's money." He's adverse to it, I guess. You can draw your own conclusions. On the radio today in KNOX, they talked about how Senator Cotton, the ranking member of the Armed Forces Committee, talked with General Brown of the Air Force, and they were going to look into it, but the comment was truncated because it was top-secret classified information. The second point I'd like to make is that, you know, when I first came here years ago, and I noticed when I came, one of the first meetings we've had here about Fu Fang, I noticed that there's one, two, three, four, five Indian Nation flags there. And I noticed that the Red Lake Indian Nation isn't, doesn't have their flag up. And this was the territory that was negotiated in treaty back at Old Treaty Crossing in Minnesota in the, I think it was the 1850s or 60s, after the Civil War. If you look into the annals of international law, and with the present-day impetus in law about how the environment should be, have a legal personhood, I would make the proposition that the US government and the state of North Dakota, Grand Forks County, and the city don't have actual legal jurisdiction. Though debatable, I would present that as a possibility. Maybe you would like to confer with the Red Lake Nation and see what they think. Obviously, they had a pipeline shoved down their throat, you know, the replacement pipeline. But it would be who of you maybe to consult with the Red Lake Nation? And that's about all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, any further comments? All right. All right, public hearing period is closed. Now, I guess it opened up to any comments from, from City Council. And what is the, I mean, the next step? You need a motion to accept the protests. What is the next step, Mr. Gostad?
I think Mr. Brooks has got that in his, in his staff report as to what the motion should read.
Yeah, the motion is in the updated staff recommendation at the top of the staff report. And I can read it again. Finding and determining that because of the protest filed by the owners was less than one-fourth of the territory proposed to be annexed, and in turn, there is an absence of protest filed by the owners of more than one-fourth of the territory proposed to be annexed. As of the date of the adoption of the resolution of annexation, the territory described in the resolution of annexation shall become part of the city of Grand Forks, North Dakota, and directing the certification with the attached copy of the resolution of annexation with the attached survey of annexation map be promptly filed with the, and recorded with the Grand Forks County North Dakota Recorder. That's the recommendations.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. About to counsel for comments or motions. Ms. Mock.
I guess I would like to at least bring up the question. I didn't vote on the development agreement due to a conflict of interest, so I'd like to at least bring it up and discuss whether that is an issue for this.
I guess, question, does anyone?
What did she say?
Does anyone want a motion to have Ms. Mock make a decision on whether she's, would be allowed to vote on this?
I would, I think regarding the annexation, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Regarding the annexation, I think it would be up to Ms. Mock if she thinks she has a conflict of interest or not. If she does, then I don't see any reason why we would. We can ask her to vote and then vote it down.
Well, I don't, I guess, I mainly bring it up because I did have a conflict of interest with other items related to this issue, so I don't want to be accused of any impropriety for voting on this matter and then having that decision called into question. So that's why I bring it up. I can pose it as, you know, the question of if I should be recused and request to be recused so that then the council can vote on it, if that would help, so.
Mr. Mayor, this annexation agreement is simply to bring the property into the city with or without, whether the corn plant is built or not. And this isn't something that just came up. We've been trying to annex this property for 30 years. I don't think Ms. Mock, when she was four, was contemplating having a conflict of interest on, related to annexation of this property, so I see no reason why she can't vote.
All right. All right, we look for further comment or motion from council?
I'll move approval of the staff report's recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Got a motion from President Sandy, a second from Mr. Cavami. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries, I believe, six-one with Dockler dissenting.
3.3, public hearing and second reading of ordinance to dedicate rights of way and final approval of the Platte de Soto Third Re subdivision located at 3510 South 18th Street.
All right, Mr. Brooks, do you have anything on item 3.3?
Nothing more to add.
All right, we'll open the public hearing for item 3.3. Anyone here to speak on item 3.3? Seeing none, public hearing period is closed. Looking for a motion, approval or further comment. We got a motion from Mr. Weigle, we have a second from Mr. Sandy. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
3.4, public hearing and second reading of an ordinance to dedicate rights of way and final approval of the Platte Grand Valley First Edition located at 62nd Avenue South and South 20th Street.
All right, same. We'll look for, to open up the public hearing on item 3.4. Or do you have a presentation, Mr. Brooks?
I do not.
Okay. Public hearing for item 3.4 is open. All right, seeing nobody, public hearing period is closed. For comment, we got a motion to approve from Mr. Sandy. President Sandy, do we have a second? Second from Mr. Weigle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
3.5, public hearing and second reading of an ordinance and final approval of Grand Valley PUD Concept Development Plan located at South Washington Street and 62nd Avenue South.
Thank you. Open the public hearing for item 3.5. Our public hearing period is closed. For motion to approve, we got one more of this, one more after this. We got a motion from President Sandy. We have a second. A second from Ms. Dockler. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And 3.6, public hearing and second reading of an ordinance and final approval of amendment to Chapter 18, Line Development Code, amending Section 18-0301, Subsection 3, relating to off-premise signs relating to spacing.
All right, same procedure. Anyone here to speak on item 3.6? Seeing none, public hearing period is now closed. Look for a motion to approve.
If I may, I'd like to just thank Mr. Brooks and Planning and Zoning Commission and their Sign Committee for all the work that they've been doing on, constantly on signs, and I really appreciate their recommendation. I'll move approval.
Got a motion to approve. We have a second, a second from Mr. Weigle. Motion from President Sandy, a second from Mr. Weigle. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Onto four, action items. And I've got, let's see here, item 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, and 4.4 was directed to be polled. Was there any other items that council wanted polled? The other items for tonight, all right, seeing none, we'd look to approve then item 4.5, 4.6, 4.7, 4.8, 4.9, 4.10, 4.11, 4.12, 4.13, 4.14, 4.15, and 4.16. Get a motion to approve. Got a motion from Mr. Weigle, second from Ms. Dockler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions carry unanimously.
4.1, special event and wet event.
Mr. Boczewski, I'm here on behalf of Cheryl Semione, and this was, did not go through the committee at all, so I just want to give you a quick update on this particular project, this event. It has been conducted for the past 15 years. It is 36 miles of swimming, and it's scheduled to be held on June 18th, on Saturday. It has been approved by the Sheriff's Office, who helps administer on a first responder basis. They have a full safety plan with each swimmer, so you have, they have a individual in a kayak that accompanies the swimmer. Swimmers will have GPS tracking, and then finally, there'll be a final bolt. We'll see the last swimmer to the exit. Right now, if the river goes over 30 feet, it will be canceled. It's at 30 feet today, our Red River, and is forecast to be 27 feet by June 11th, and hopefully it keeps going down from there, so.
That's enough.
So with that, we'd ask, with those conditions, we'd ask for approval of this particular event.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Field. Anybody have any questions on the eastern North Dakota wet event?
That's extreme North Dakota, I believe. I'll move approval.
All right, thank you, Mr. Weber. We got a motion to approve. We have a second from Ms. Dockler. The motion came from Mr. Weber. Any further comments on item 4.1? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
4.2, Agassi Water Line Relocation Agreement.
All right, Mr. Gostad, please.
I'll give a, just a brief summary of the agreement. What this is, is to relocate some Agassi water user, rural water lines that run right down the middle of the Fu Fang property. It is to move it. It will be placed within the utility easements within the plat. That'll be along the eastern edge of the Fu Fang property. The start date, the estimated start date was supposed to be June 1st, probably is bumped a little bit later, but they're expecting to have the work done by July 31st of 2022. All this work is going to be done by Agassi so that they can continue on a temporary basis to continue to service the customers they have in, in the area. They've already received bids for the materials and the installation, which is $53,400. We've, the agreement calls for the, the cost may not exceed more than $65,000, just in case something would happen, but we've already got the bids for that. The city also has agreed to pay other costs with respect to this, to essentially make this move, not have any costs out of pocket for Agassi Rural Water District. They will maintain the water line that's being installed until the time period in which the city then starts servicing these customers, once that water line is put in. Once we pay them the money to relocate, they'll abandon the line that's currently down the middle of the Fu Fang property, and then once both the annexation and the city has started servicing the customers in this area, then they'll, they'll abandon the line that's being put in as well. There is some exception, though. We've had some discussions with Agassi, and this, there's part of the agreement that there will be another agreement with Agassi with respect to the city servicing customers in this area. We'll be taking over some of those customers, except that on the northern reaches of the annexation area, we believe Agassi is probably better suited to continue to service those areas. That'll make them, so the, the amount of loss, revenue loss, won't be as much. In addition, the agreement speaks of the city and Agassi working to minimize the impact to Agassi with respect to those future customers. So that's, more to come type of agreement, but that's essentially what, what this agreement does, is it relocates those property lines so that development can occur, so it doesn't go right down the middle, and allow the Agassi to continue to service those customers on a temporary basis. We have reached an agreement with Agassi. What you've got here in front of you is the agreement that has been negotiated with Agassi. Fu Fang has also endorsed it. There's one small change that talks about the permitting. It's in Section 2.4.1. We're just going to make reference that the installation will be within the license area. It's not a significant substantive change, but that, that's one change. Other than that, the parties would be prepared to sign off on this as soon as the council approves it.
Mayor, I just wanted to, I wanted to thank Agassi Rural Water. They were a really good partner to work with. Mr. Kramer was up here to say whether we're going to follow through on all our good faith, due diligence, and I think this is an example of working with Mr. Eaton, working with Agassi Rural Water, and coming with a satisfactory conclusion with Fu Fang. So I just want to extend our public thanks to John and his board.
Thank you, Mr. Field. Any comments, questions from council or motions, please, this time? Got a motion to approve from President Sandy. We have a second from Mr. Cavami. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
4.3, Fire Department Mutual Aid Agreement with East Grand Forks.
Good evening, Mayor Boczewski, members of the council. This is an updated mutual aid agreement between the Grand Forks Fire Department and the East Grand Forks Fire Department. As I made aware in a previous meeting, part of our plan for serving the annexed area would be to utilize East Grand Forks tanker truck. And looking at the previous agreement, it was last signed in 2000, so Chief Bushy and myself believed it prudent to update this agreement with all current parties involved. So we reviewed it. We added some language that kind of clarifies things and benefits both committees. We added some language that kind of clarifies things and benefits both communities. It was reviewed by both city attorneys, Mr. Gaustad and the attorney from East Grand Forks, and they have concurred some language was added for liability purposes. So we're asking for just the approval to proceed with this mutual aid agreement.
Thank you, chief. Any questions for chief? All right, we got a motion to approve from Mr. Cavami. We got a second from Vice President Mock. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Four point four, authorized submission of COPS grant and public safety staffing plan discussion.
You want to hit the lights?
Mayor Bocinski and members of city council. Number one, I apologize. Generally, requests that we're going to talk about this evening, we generally go through the annual budget process, but we do have a grant opportunity, a COPS grant opportunity in front of us. So we are in front of you to have a further discussion. I just want to provide you some background. I'm going to give you some background on what's in front of you. We also have two, both our deputy chiefs, Johnson and Mackey, are here, and then Ms. Storseth and Ms. Vattenstall, Mr. Vattenstall, we've been working with our police department on this particular request. I asked our H R director, Tanji Bhavat, and through both, the mayor, current mayor, Mayor Bocinski's administration, also Mayor Brown's administration, and through a succession of city councils, I will say one thing about both entities is that you've always supported public safety, and you've always supported filling positions in both, in all of the various departments, whether it be P S A, Fire, or Police. Over the last ten years, you've done an extraordinary job, both as mayors and as city council. I just wanted to give you a highlight of what you've done. Most of the positions that have been added in the general fund, if not virtually all, have been in these public safety areas. And the only other large general fund departments that we have than these three public safety departments are, is the street department. But back in 2012, you had sixty-six firefighters. Currently, today, we have, or sixty-six in the department. Currently, we have seventy-nine. So that's an additional thirteen over that ten-year period of time. Twelve of those came through the new fire station, number five on the south end of town. We did add a training personnel, too, also, so that got to the thirteen. In police, in 2012, we had ninety-seven personnel, and currently, we have one hundred and fifteen. One hundred and fifteen is also the administrative support personnel. And so that's an additional, addition of eighteen personnel. Most of those have been officers on the street. And many of those have come through various COPS grants that have occurred over that time period also. And then finally, with P S A, in 2012, we had seventeen, and currently, we have twenty-one that are allocated, so that's an additional four. So if you look at that increase over the ten years, fires increased twenty percent in personnel, police nineteen percent, and P S A twenty-five percent. So we really have invested a lot of our resources in that first response. And Mr. Sandy, you've been through here through all, from 2012 forward, and that's always been a real emphasis as part of the general fund and as part of public safety. Currently, right now, what we wanted to do is kind of really highlight for you is that generally, we're going to, Marine and our team here, we're going to come forward with a mayor's budget. We haven't finalized all that, but we do have some personnel requests in all three departments. And currently, there's two additional requests for 2023 in P S A. This police study that we're going to talk a little bit about, the sign, demonstrates a need for eight to fifteen additional F T E. And then Fire has asked for an additional seven over this, going through the remaining part of the decade as we move forward. We're trying to maximize grant opportunities as much as possible. Number one, the COPS grant, of which is in front of you this evening, and we've utilized that before. And it's, the COPS grant's always been moderated or kind of emphasized depending on who the president is. So based on who the president and what the emphasis is, is kind of a nuance. I think all the administrations have emphasized street level, street level policing, and whatever that particular emphasis may be. I think the COPS grant, and I know our police department will be up here, and I think the deadline might even already be this week, and that's why we're in front of you at this point in time. I think with both the P S A, I just want to let you know is that right now, we have two open positions, and that's a high-stress, high burnout. So we already have two vacancies in that. So not only are we looking at additional positions here, we're more focused on how we attract and retain the existing people that we have working for the city of Grand Forks, because we already have two open positions. So we haven't determined whether in the budget that we're going to add to, when we're already struggling with filling those two, but I just want to let you know on that. On the Fire, what they've requested is one additional firefighter on all the various shifts, and that gets you just seven additional firefighters. And it's more for, what we've come to, I think when you look at the police report and you look at the Fire, it's for similar reasons. It's, you know, I'm going to use the police term of the shift relief factor. And essentially, that, what happens, we want so many firefighters in the firehouse, we want so many police officers on the street doing things, and for various reasons, whether it's, you know, various leaves that we have, whether it's military leave, whether it's parental leave, whether it's vacation, whether it's sick, that sometimes we struggle with minimum shifting, minimum staffing on shifts. And so both the Fire and the Police Department are going to come with a similar story, not only to Mayor Bocinski, to why we should add additional positions, but they want to come to U S City Council as part of why they need additional resources. So the Police Department have gone through very, various factors, and they're going to kind of talk about, you know, a range of, from eight officers all the way up to, you know, fifty-some officers. And so I think when we've talked with Mayor Bocinski, what we are recommending that you do under this COPS grant to submit would be six officers. And so Marine will go through that, also maybe with Mike, is that with six officers, we will not have to increase mils over time, that we do have a funding strategy. However, we wanted to let you know that there are other requests in public safety that we'll need to take a serious look at and not just look at a siloed thinking of just looking at one public safety department without looking at all the various issues that we have. I would say in all of our city departments, we're suffering from some attrition, in particular with, in the Police Department currently. And so we have to take a new look at how we're managing, how we're leading, how we're paying, how we're providing benefits. And that's what we're suffering from right now a little bit, too. And so our answer isn't going to solely be, you know, sometimes when we work in the public, sometimes the answer always is, well, we need more people. And so we do need to take another emphasis on the people that we do have in trying to retain as many people as we can currently. Mayor, with that, I think, I don't know if it's Deputy Chief Johnson or Mackey that's going to give you the overview of where we're at, and then I'd ask Marine to give an overview, and then we'd ask you to move forward with the grant request.
All right, thank you. Good evening, council members, Mayor Bocinski. I've just got a very brief PowerPoint presentation to kind of go through some of the basic numbers associated with our request. Roughly every four years, we do a very comprehensive staffing study. Our current sworn staffing level is ninety-two officers. We achieved that number based on a 2014 staffing study that we then completed a multi-year strategic plan that concluded in 2020, getting us to that ninety-two number. In 2018, we did an additional staffing study that showed that based on our increasing calls for service, that at that point, we really should have started looking to add numbers again. We wanted to fulfill the initial multi-year strategic plan prior to requesting additional. And so then in 2018, we reviewed that, monitored, and pushed forward to the 2022 staffing study. And in that time, you can see our calls for service have continued to increase. Last year, fifty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-seven calls for service. It's our record number. And based on that shift relief factor that Mr. Phelan was describing, we're looking at needing roughly one hundred officers just to kind of stay where we need to be keeping our shifts staffed. That increase in calls for service does increase the number of officers we really need to have on duty at any given time. Currently, we have six officers on duty at any given time. That's based on those 2014 and 2018 numbers. The new 2022 numbers have increased things dramatically. So we need to have a minimum, we feel, of seven officers on duty per shift. To ensure we can have those seven officers on duty per shift using that two-point-four relief factor that's part of our Police Department, that means that we need to get up to about ninety-nine officers, and then we would have to add one additional sergeant. And these are the basic shift breakdowns right now. Currently, we have authorized fourteen officers on night shift, fifteen on day shift, and fifteen on afternoon shift. Our current study would show that we need to have seventeen officers per shift. Again, that would kind of trip that additional sergeant that we would need, bringing us up to a hundred. Mr. Phelan had mentioned, we're looking for between eight and fifteen officers total. Anything above that fifteen, or excuse me, anything above that hundred total sworn officers would go towards reducing the obligated time that our officers are committed at this point. There's multiple ways to evaluate staffing needs. One of them is what we discussed, the minimum staffing. The other way that's widely recognized by International Association Chiefs of Police is that obligated time. How much time are officers currently busy on calls for service, responding to calls for service, on the calls for service, and so forth? They recommend thirty-three percent of an officer's time be dedicated to call for service. Right now, we're at eighty-nine percent obligated time. So an officer's time, eighty-nine percent of the time is dedicated to being on a call for service, which leaves roughly eleven percent for them to do that proactive policing, community engagement, and that sort of thing. Everything above that hundred sworn officers, getting us towards our goal of a hundred and seven sworn officers, each officer reduces that obligated amount. If we were to fully realize that hundred and seven officers, we would be at approximately fifty percent obligated time, so not quite where I A C P recommends, but well ahead of where we are currently. To get to that thirty-three percent obligated time that I A C P recommends with our current staffing, or excuse me, with our current call load, we would need a hundred and forty-seven total, which is obviously not realistic. So that's why we're looking at that increase in eight to fifteen officers over the next couple of years. The COPS grant gives us an opportunity of kind of jump-starting that process. We can apply for six officers. The cost is shared between us and the federal government. Roughly fifty percent of their salary over three years would be covered. And then there's a mandatory retention period of one to two years after that, depending on what grant exactly we're discussing. As Mr. Phelan mentioned, we're kind of under the gun as far as the time constraints go. Thursday is the last opportunity for us to apply for that grant. That's why we come here in front of you tonight, just requesting authorization to apply for those grant positions. Once we do apply, there's no guarantee that they'll give us all six positions. They might offer a lesser amount, or they might completely decline. There's no guarantee at that point. And the last page here is our organizational chart. The yellow positions would be those grant positions that we would look to increase our staffing and add in 2023. Any questions for me?
Mayor, I'll let Marine go through and then.
Yeah. Why don't we do that first? If you can just stay close.
That'd be great, if you could advance the slides for me. Thank you, Mr. Phelan, Mr. Mackey. You did a great job going through what's on the agenda before you tonight. This is exactly the good discussion that we need to have as far as public safety as we enter into framing not only the twenty-three budget, but future budgets. Looking at the staffing levels and the needs of the Police Department, we did ask that they look at any grant opportunities that would be available, and that's how this item got to be on your agenda tonight. We have utilized grants in the past for helping to phase in funding for our police officers, and it's a good way to try to build, build up the level of officers that are requested and get them on the streets day one, but yet phase in the funding over a four-year period of time at twenty-five percent a year. So what we wanted to do is to try to give you some information and context into this in helping to make your decision with this grant, and if you want to approve, applying for this grant and at what level. We put together a few scenarios for you. As Mr. Phelan stated prior, the mayor's recommending at the level of six officers to apply for this grant. We put together that as well as a three officer application, and then, and also including all positions. So starting with, in looking at how to fund and what the impacts are at the level of addition of three officers, in using the phasing in the funding of the possible grant over the four-year period, we believe that we could do that through growth and utilization of some of the cash balance that's in the general fund, but we could do this without projected mil increases and keep us above that eighteen percent threshold fund balance policy that you have in the general fund. So our projection, which is always only as good as the assumptions, but we would project in the six-year time period, by doing so, you wouldn't have the need of mil increases based on our assumptions. Now, in looking at the six officers, if we could just go back one, Todd, still on the six officers, and using those grant proceeds over the four-year period to phase in, and also the two, our share of the two past P S A employees that are being requested, we believe this, too, in additionally using some loan and stabilization reserve through that six-year period and use of some cash, we could, we could manage that through the six-year period with no mil increases projected by the utilization of that cash in the grant. We do spend on some of the cash, but just to that eighteen percent level. So we project that we could manage that through the, through the time period. In the next slide, Todd, if you could, if we were to look at eight officers plus, you can just see what we project those impacts to be, then you'd probably, and of course, this is contingent on what happens in the next six years, but this is our best projection at the time what those impacts would be. So we wanted just to give you just a summary as you make this decision, what those financial impacts look to be as we put this budget together. And with that, Todd, I don't know if you had anything else to add. We did go through this earlier with the budget timeline. This is when we'd have more discussion about impacts on budgets and projections. But as Mr. Phelan said, the deadline of this grant is the ninth. So this part, we wanted to give you some context as to when you make your decision on this tonight.
Mayor, the only thing I would add is, you know, we've always wanted to staff so that if there's any economic downturns, we could always sustain. Our city forces, and we've been successful at that, if you think about the Great Recession. The city of Grand Forks performed well and didn't have to lay off folks. The downturn of the oil in North Dakota, where we saw significant reductions in our state aid and those sort of things, we were able to sustain. And then finally, with the pandemic, and so we've always tried to right-size our staffing levels so that if something does happen, we're not one of those cities where they suddenly have large and significant layoffs. So we try to keep it within, within the boundaries. The other thing that I've heard, I'm going to ask Deputy Chief Mackey to come up here, is from some of you regarding this grant request, that what will these officers be doing? What's their emphasis going to be? And how is this going to, going to make things better, other than, you know, to add more officers on the shift? So I ask you, Deputy Chief Mack, if you can let, let the council know what the emphasis will be on for these officers.
Absolutely. The grant does have certain parameters, and so we did have to somewhat create duties for these officers. They're going to be very heavily involved in patrol, but they're going to be community engagement and crime prevention officers. We have a new crime analyst that started this year with us. And these officers, if we are able to get six officers, one would be assigned to each patrol sector in town, and they would be essentially the community engagement and crime prevention team leaders of that sector. So they would be the ones working with that crime analyst to find what the data is saying, what is happening within their patrol sector, where are the hotspots, what crimes are happening, that sort of thing. They would be that team leader focusing on getting that information out to the rest of the sector officers. And then they would also be responsible for being primary partners within the community with various shareholders that are unique to their patrol sector. So it could be business owners, it could be various community members that have organizations within the community. Each sector is going to have a little bit different assignment. However, these officers are all going to be assigned to patrol. That's where our greatest need is. But to fit the grant parameters, we wanted to ensure that they did enrich- But to fit the grant parameters, we wanted to ensure that they did enrich our community engagement philosophy as well as partner them with our crime analysts so we could actually use the data that the crime analyst has and get it to the troops that really are the boots on the ground, and they're the ones that can dramatically make a difference in what's happening within their sector. All right. Thank you, Deputy Chief Mackey. First, I'd just like to say I do fully support this and plan to have all six in the budget. If, you know, if this grant doesn't come through, we'll have to rethink it. It's great to see the federal government is actually funding the police instead of the other way around, that I think a lot of us were scared of the last year and a half. And not only do I support adding officers, I think we need to do everything we can to keep the excellent officers that we have. We've seen that challenge across the country of keeping staff up, and I hope we've got measures in place and can do well in Grand Forks to keep the officers we have on top of that. So, any other comments?
Mr. Sandy, President Sandy. Is this grant available every year?
I believe Mr. Phelan mentioned that it kind of depends on the administration. Currently, there's $156 million available for this grant. I wouldn't anticipate any of that is held over to next year, and there's no telling what would be available next year.
We've applied for this grant in the past and have been awarded this grant. Have we ever applied and not gotten fully funded?
My understanding is the grants that we have applied for in the past, we have received officers on, though I don't, I can go back about eight or 10 years with history. Prior to that, I wasn't very involved in the process.
Mayor, if, so I know there's a deadline now, right? And so, I understand the times of the essence. I almost feel like this would have been a great conversation to have during our overall budgeting process because maybe we should be applying for all 15 positions today, right? I don't know. So, I'm not sure exactly how to process this in this timeframe. I personally feel like perhaps we should, I don't know, I'd love to have this discussion actually next month while we're starting about the budget. If we apply for all six, do we have to accept all six, right? Maybe next month, we determine we actually only want three because we've actually put a fair amount of time into the thought process. I don't, I'm not saying you guys haven't done your diligence. I just, this is one of those that it's spur of the moment and...
I think on the timing, yeah, we'll just have to look, when is the grant? I mean, we might not know until after the budget season's over, so we might have to make an amendment later.
Sure.
The difference this year and the past, you could only, I think you could only have up to 5% of your officers apply, 5%. Now, it's up to 20%, so we could actually ask for 15 if we wanted. With 156 million across the country and us only getting, hoping for 750,000, you know, it's going to be competitive, I'm sure. So, hopefully, we'll be able to show the need with the calls for service. But the timing isn't great, but I think anytime we can get federal funding that's off our taxpayers locally, I think is great. Did I answer that well, Mr. Mackey, or Deputy Chief Mackey? Yes. Any other comments from council?
Quick question. Is there a history of partial funding for this grant, or is it an all or nothing?
So, we, if we were awarded six, we could step down and request three or four. Likewise, the federal government, if we apply for six, they could give us two officers or six officers or anywhere in between. I was kind of cautioned by one of our grant administrators at the police department that if we ask for six and then we later, and get approved for six, and then later opt to drop down to two or three or four or whatever number, sometimes that puts an asterisk next year agency for future grants. However, I guess we just have to do what is the best for the city at this point, and we'll deal with whatever that asterisk might lead down the road, so...
But there is a potential that we could apply for six and only receive three?
Yes, or zero.
Thank you.
Any further comments? All right, seeing none, for a motion, I suppose.
I'll move approval for application for six FTE plus the two PSAP for the grant process.
I think that the PSAP part wouldn't need to be attached, is that correct?
Yeah, we don't need to attach the PSAP.
In the budget session, they're just kind of, yeah.
I rescind the part about the PSAP.
All right. We got a motion. Do we have a second? A second, a motion from Mr. Cavami, a second from Mr. Veen. Any further discussion? Yeah, Mr. Sandy, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll vote, I will vote in favor of this, but it wasn't even a year ago when Chief Nelson stood up there and I asked him how we were doing with officers, and he said we were doing great. So, I just find, again, I find this a little surprising. I will vote to support this. I think we should have continued discussion about this during the budgeting process. Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. I think that's it for action items. Moving on to five information items.
5.1 Statement of Changes in Cash Balances as of April 30th.
Thank you. And number six, citizen comments. Shoot, did I have, was there two up at the top there? Those get placed. Oh, here they are.
Are these already done?
Yeah, those are done. Do we have Brianna Hespert? Oh, Ms. Carlson.
Brianna? Brianna? I think she can end his polls.
Okay, Ms. Carlson.
Is there a next person or...?
Sure, Mr., we'll go back to Ms. Carlson. Would you like to go, please?
Okay. I've been prepared on Sheila Spicer for Grand Forks. I have a question for Dana. I have been speaking to somebody we both know. Comment was, would you and Ross Kennedy have an open forum, everybody in the city, whoever wants to come? He wants to know who knows more about China, you or him? Would you have an open discussion with him? Everybody wants to know. You've gone on about him. Would you have an open discussion with him?
Sure.
You will? Wonderful. We'll set it up with you two so everybody from town can come and listen. It's going to be public, okay? It's like you promised me a public meeting with everybody from the city about Fufang, which you never followed up on, did you?
We've had nine of those, or 10.
No, you didn't. You didn't have the whole city come and talk to you.
We've had 10 of those public meetings.
Okay.
And we did have another one on the North End.
Okay. All right, another thing, is the fireman still here? On? I have a question. If there was a huge chemical fire at that Fufang plant, would you guys be able to handle it? That's all I want to know. I'm sorry, I'll ask you guys.
You can speak into it, and maybe you can answer. I don't know. You want to take it, Mr.?
I, sure. I, I...
Why don't you come up and...
Come on up here. I was just commenting, I was told about that at two meetings ago, and you weren't here. Dana commented, if there was a huge chemical fire at that Fufang plant, would you guys be able to handle it? Huge plant, who, chemical?
I can't simply answer that in a yes or no question because, for example, when a train derailed in Castleton, there was not enough firefighting forces in the state to put that fire out.
Okay, so a chemical?
And so, that's Bakken crude oil, that is essentially a chemical, right? And so, there's always a situation that could exceed the locals' capabilities. I can tell you that in Grand Forks, we have one of the four regional hazmat teams in the state. There are four, one in Fargo, one in Grand Forks, one in mine, one in...
I do know that, yes.
For the regional section. I can tell you that our firefighters are trained as well as anybody in the state to handle hazmat emergencies.
How hazmat, are there chemicals that are in there? We've heard they're pretty toxic.
I have not seen a list of every chemical that are going to be in that plant.
Can we send it to you? Would we be allowed to as people?
I don't know why. I would prefer to get it from them themselves to verify that those are the chemicals.
I would prefer from us than them. Sorry. Okay, that's all I need to know.
Okay.
Okay, and another thing. I listened to a program, it was on, it was on my phone, and it was with a Dr. Brandon Mulvaney. He was out at the airbase. One of you attended it. You?
What's that?
Attended the meeting?
No, I watched it afterwards, yes.
Okay. Anyway, his comment, you guys have told us the whole time that when Fufang comes in, it's not Chinese-related, Communist-Chinese-related. His comment was, anything, any company that comes out of China is CCP. They have to follow CCP's rules. Everything goes by that. You have no say in when that company comes in. And his comment was, watch your contracts very carefully. Just letting you know that we do know this company is CCP, okay?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Maticek?
Yeah.
Please.
Good evening, council members. Frank Maticek, 4150 Columbia Road North. I hope we get over this pretty soon. I like Monday Night Football, and I'd like to start watching it instead of watching you guys. But what I want to talk about is due diligence, because that's a term I've heard a lot of. Mr. Brooks, Mr. Phelan, Mr. Sandy, you're not going to believe this, but I didn't do due diligence when I was on planning and zoning Red River Bio Refinery came to town. I kind of thought, hey, we're going to turn agricultural waste into energy? Looks like a pretty good deal to me. But we never looked into the fact of how they were actually going to do it and what they were going to do. What do we have with Red River Bio Refinery right now? We have a plant that shut down, laid off employees, never, ever achieved the 60 employees I think they told you they were going to get, and they polluted the English Cooley, they illegally dumped into Gray's Township. This is not due diligence. Now, did we know that? No, we didn't know that. But if we'd have questioned them more, maybe we would have found out what kind of an operation they really were. This is touted by Mr. Lund as his greatest accomplishment to Grand Forks, was to bring $100 million Red River Bio Refinery here. And I'm not going to blame him for that. I'm not going to blame him for their faults, but this is what we got. This is why people want to know more about Fufang. This is why we should know more about Fufang, exactly what they're going to do. I've asked you what they're going to do with their solid waste. I have not got an answer. I've asked you what they're going to do with the rest of the 370 acres. I have not got an answer. I've asked you what Phase Two of it is, and I have not got an answer. And yet, you guys go on the radio and you say we've answered all the questions of these people. You have not answered our questions.
That's right.
The annexation, the first thing we were told at Faulkner Township meeting was, we need to annex all those businesses so we can get their contributions to put the infrastructure in for this cornmilling, wet cornmilling plant. You're kidding me? You're going to take your citizens and their businesses and hang them out to bring some other industry in? And if it's that big of an industry, why can't they afford to do it themselves?
Exactly.
I mean, you know, I know this is kind of the end of the road here, but you guys ought to really think about this. What you're doing to the community and to some of these businesses out there, it's not right. And another little thing I want to tell you about due diligence. The other night, I had an event, and I was at the Gretzky Center at UND. I come out and I got in the parking lot, and it stunk so bad, you wouldn't believe it. I thought I was in the middle of my feedlot, my farm. So, I followed it. I went down Stanford Road. Then I went down around Syntlot because I wanted to find out where the stink was coming from. I thought maybe it was Syntlot's lagoon, whatever. But it was Red River Bio Refinery. It stunk all the way out to 27th. It stunk all the way, just about all the way to 40th. The smell was that bad. And that's our due diligence with odor. This plant is actually shut down, and it still smells bad. The citizens deserve better than this. I'm sorry, but that's my comment for tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Maticek. Matt Marshall, Mr. Marshall?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm coming just from a different perspective. I appreciate the public comments and the dialogue back and forth. I can tell you, having sat through a lot of these meetings, I've learned a lot back and forth. As a resident, I support you continuing your due diligence and research. I want to see the answers to the studies that you've engaged in. I want to hear about this company more. I think there aren't a ton of opportunities to have a large project like this located in your town, and I want to see the end, and I trust that you guys will make the best decision for our community going forward. So, good luck and thank you, and continue moving forward and get those answers and continue the dialogue back and forth. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carlson, please.
I remembered my water this time, so I won't use a clock time searching for that. I have a few comments. One, again, I want you to know that you talk about that there's a few verbal people in the group, and I hope that you all know and understand by now, there's thousands, there's thousands of people that are against this plant. They're watching you on TV, and we are not the lone people in this fight. Mr. Sandy, the labor camps. Have we proven that that does not exist with Fufang in China? That was one of your statements early on.
No, that is not accurate. That is not an accurate statement. Mr. Leek stood up here and said that Fufang had to, as a Chinese organization, they had to get vetted by Customs and Border Protection in order to confirm that they were not using slave labor. And he asked me, or us, would we allow them to continue if it's found out that they are using slave labor? And I said, no.
Okay, so we don't have that information yet?
We don't get that information.
Who gets that information?
It happens from Customs and Border Protection.
So, who do I contact to get that information?
No idea. Ask Mr. Leek.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Leek is wondering this.
I have been doing a lot of research on the Fufang projects that are happening in China, and it seems that the majority of the factories that are located in that region, and we all know, if you've looked up any of that information, that they do use slave labor. So, I'd be very interested, and I'll pursue that information. So, thank you for your answer. I am very disappointed with our council that we are having to go through the process of hiring attorneys to have our voices heard. You were elected to represent the voices of the people, but now we're going to have to go to court for our voices to be heard? Really? Really? Are you crazy? I don't understand the craziness of it. We have to go to court in order to not have our First Amendment right trampled upon by the people that we elected to run this city? And raise your hand if you had a ward meeting before you moved ahead with this Fufang project. One. But yet, you're saying that you represent the voices of the people? And I questioned you the first time that I stood up here. Do you know what the people in your ward want? Have you walked around your neighborhood? Do you know how many signs are up that say no to Fufang? A lot. A lot. You are incorrect, Mr. Sandy. You did not do your due diligence. I also am very offended how you have represented the Grand Forks Air Force Base and how you are representing, you're throwing the people under the bus, as someone said a few minutes ago, I think it was Mr. Maticek, throwing the people under the bus for a Communist-China country. 233 jobs. Is it worth it? I don't think so. Pollution, okay, are we getting a state-of-the-art facility with the technology? They talk about the technology, that it's going to be state-of-the-art, and it's going to prevent pollution. Is that what we're getting? You know, and I know. The public probably doesn't know yet. Is it a state-of-the-art facility?
That's getting reviewed right now.
I dare say, I dare say it is not. I dare, I dare say, I dare say it is not state-of-the-art facility. And then there's the issue that the Viking Pipeline is coming, and please correct me if I'm wrong. Viking Pipeline is coming from Minnesota and we want it to come through North Dakota and up into Canada. That's a Minnesota project. But we're wanting to use North Dakota COVID funds for that? I don't understand that. And that's a comment. That's not a question. You are also not meeting your requirements of the state pilot project. I will give that information to Mr. Phelan. Because as is indicated in the development agreement and the pilot agreement, that there is a city policy on pilots. There is not. We all know that now. It's been very clear. There's not a, there's not a policy on pilot agreements. What you do is you follow the state law on pilot agreements. So I looked through the state law to find all the information that is required on pilot agreements. Certificates from the Department of Commerce, estimated project costs from the Department of Commerce, township supervisors involved as ex-official members for negotiation of the tax exemption, and on and on and on. I'll give that to you. You may have that. The only thing out of...
How many there?
There were eight questions that I asked as far as information that is supposed to be produced if you're going to follow state law on administering pilot programs. You were able to, and Sherry may speak to this, you were able to respond that only one thing out of those eight was done correctly. And that was that you posted a notice to competitors in the local newspaper two times. Nothing else has been met. Please feel free to take a look at the paperwork there. Ms. Barber back here mentioned as far as the China employees. And I do recall you, Mr. Botenski, saying at one of the first meetings that that will never happen. That will never happen. And then you said, "Well, unless we can't get employees to work." We can't get employees to work anywhere in our city. So obviously, it's going to happen, I'm guessing. And Ms. Barber was very clear on the visas that are required for that to happen. We know you can't be blind to the national news. You can't be blind to what Senator Cotton has said and General Brown and even our Senator Kramer. It's a national security risk. 33 jobs. Is it worth it? 33 jobs. Look at the frickin' headache this is. I'm tired of it. I know you guys are tired of it. Conflicts of interest. I know you have none, Mr. Sandy. Ms. Vane, I have to apologize for the last meeting that I was at because I literally felt like we took a recess so you guys could put him in his place on not arguing the point about the water. And you did, and you did very well. You put him in his place well because he then voted yes along with you. So you did very good on that, being a bunch of bullies. Conflict of interest. Mr. Gostad. Collusion, fraud. It's all there. And you'll be hearing about it.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? I got through the cards. Mr. Spicer?
I was going to clarify...
Please.
The point that was made about the border protection, you know, about Chinese imports. In Xinjiang, it's been said that they use forced labor. There's also the infrastructure, there's coal and corn. So under the 2021 Uyghur Forced Labor Protection Act, later this month of June, there will be around the 22nd, I think, a determination made about what products can be imported from China that aren't using forced labor. Well, it's my opinion that China moves people around Uyghurs, others, to do forced labor in various factories around China. It's documented. I would portend that China is guilty of forced labor throughout their country. And therefore, everything is tainted from China, although that's just my opinion. Therefore, I would request that the council take into consideration the history. We all remember back when President Nixon had ping pong diplomacy. And all that was kind of nice until it led up to the 1989 Tiananmen Square massacre of untold numbers. So it's been in my mind ever since this process has started about Fufang is why the council would want to put a stain on their reputation, the city of Grand Forks, the county of Grand Forks, perhaps the state of North Dakota, why they would want to deal with such people that we can't trust. They have a Marxist regime of controlling people's minds. They come out and say it themselves. It's their Marxist philosophy. We in the West have some sort of a post-structuralist idea of inhuman individuality. So we'll see what happens when the end of June comes. Thank you.
Mr. Spicer, please.
Craig Spicer. No matter how you try to sell this to the people of Grand Forks and to the people of Faulkner Township, this is a forced annexation. You can jump through all the hoops you want. You can get your lawyer, your city lawyer, who should be working for us. But apparently, he puts us under the table and looks to direct his wage to a higher level. We have been set aside for a company that can't stand on its own because you directed to give them millions of tax dollars from any and every source you can possibly dream up, which is an insult to this country, not alone Grand Forks and North Dakota. Since this project started and everything that you represent seems wrong to me, no matter what level you bring it in at, whether it's the water, the smell, the traffic, go on and on. You know all of those. I'm not going to repeat them. Okay? Why should we waste our resources to another country who's going to take their product, most of it, and ship it back to them? Who's been proven to be owned by a Communist country? You just, somebody, whichever councilman was at the meeting, he literally stated that there is not a business that is in China that is not owned by the Communist Party. There's a fact. I don't know how much more we can do to lay it out. Jody laid it out. It's been laid out before you many times. Who is behind this project that you people are so boheaded that you can't see the facts of the people that voted you in? I really don't understand how you think you're going to keep your jobs come the next election. And Mr. Sandy, as much as I hate to come down on you, you've insulted your position so bad that nobody even wants to take your job away from you. That's what you've done to your position. I'm sorry. But it comes down to that. Because you think you know more than the people that run this country that we put our faith in. Okay? I'm not going to put my faith in you or Mr. Clomie or any of you because I don't trust a one of you because of the way you handled this project. Why couldn't you have been more forthcoming with this thing and been more admirable? And people would have respected how you did this job. But yet, everything we've done has been an uphill fight. And we, because we did this fight, you had to answer our questions whether you laid low on them or not. Okay? You would have not done your due diligence unless we would have called you on everything that came down the line. And instead, the citizens of Grand Forks have to produce enough income, revenue, to hire our own attorney to take care of a matter that should be taken care of by our people that we've elected.
That's right.
I'm not very happy with any of you. I really feel sorry for you that you've cheated your country. You literally have turned on your country. And there's a word for it. And nobody said it yet, but I'll say it. You're traitors.
Ms. Hasbert?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi. Sorry, I was trying to find parking. Like my friend Gerald, I too drove 420 miles one way to be here. So I've been watching this council since, I'm going to say Fufang came into my purview August of last summer, 2021. I tried ringing alarm bells, but we know how social media works and nobody really talked about it. So here I am. First, I would like to say hi to my children because they're watching. Gabriel, Matea, Kayden, and Ella Rose. The reason why I'm here is because of them. This, what you guys are allowing into your town doesn't affect just you. It's going to affect this entire state. We've had, we've had majors like, what's his name? Jim? It's probably in my notebook. Who expressed concern about what's going on here. He's a major in the United States Air Force. Jeremy D. Fox, yep. In regards to having a CCP industrial superstructure near sensitive DoD installations and economic lawfare that can come out of that. That is one person out of the Air Force who took his time to write an 11-page report on the many issues that he sees allowing a CCP ran company into Grand Forks. We have the US Space Force, as you guys all know. There's a lot of things I'm not going to repeat. But I will say that the new elephant in the room is that BitZero company with Kevin O'Leary. And I believe that is the reason why you guys decided to go with Minnesota instead of, you know, piping in that pipeline to West North Dakota. My neck of the woods. Because BitZero will be using that natural gas to build their big data centers. And one comment I would like to stress about Yahoo News announcing this that I found interesting was, "North Dakota emerged as the logical choice for BitZero due to alignment on the state's goal of being carbon neutral by 2030," which was already way in the books before, just recently. So I'm not going to go into that. "It's robust energy industry." Well, China already owns our oil and gas, so why not give them our infrastructure too? "Favorable tax and regulatory environment." Yeah, we know all about that, except for the people of North Dakota. They don't get any tax abatements. And access, this is the important part, "and access to top-tier engineering and software talent for the commercialization of new intellectual property in the data center space." Kevin O'Leary. So data seems to be a big thing. And with Space Force having a satellite yard here with the drone technology that is being propagated out of Grand Forks and UND and all that stuff, I think America understands that data is, you know, the new gold, like information. And we have many hubs in North Dakota. We are, we have always been the, like the third nation, I guess, if we separated from the Union as far as nuclear power. But now we are becoming a nuclear power when it comes to data. So that is the new weapon. Allowing China to come in here to siphon that data out and report it back is... It's really bad. And I mean, individually, sanctions would be horrible. I wouldn't want to see any of you go to jail or prison or even be financially hurt by this. But I also wouldn't want to see the city of Grand Forks be financially hurt by this either. So I just really hope that you reconsider because the tides are going to change. Biden's not going to be in the White House forever. Hovind is not going to be in the Senate forever. And once we get that momentum back and we allow our real generals, not the purse generals, but the real ones, to come forward and have a backing by Congress and the White House, they're going to be looking at this. So, thank you for your time.
Go ahead.
Okay, this is a separate issue, which I forgot to address. But this is also, we are on a separate issue from the annexation, so it's appropriate. So first of all, with respect to well-written agreements, this development agreement is very well-written. So thank you for that, Mr. Gostad. There is a section in here, which I did read weeks ago, which I am searching for, which essentially says that the land will not be officially the Chinese government's, sorry, Fufang, slip of the tongue, until conditions are met in the development agreement. I believe that's correct. May I ask if that's correct? I believe that I read that in the development agreement. That would not be officially theirs until we go through certain conditions. Right now, it's kind of in holding.
We don't have any jurisdiction over land purchases. We, no infrastructure will go on until that's all met. We're not going to spend any money, break any ground until all the 20-plus conditions have been met and everything's been looked at.
Right. So, and then somewhere in the development agreement, it mentions that the land is being sold for $120,000 or $20,000?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, thank you. $26,000 an acre for land that's worth $5,000 to $7,000. So I'm puzzled by why equipment has already started to arrive on the land, which is not yet officially purchased by Fufang from a similar factory in California, which this equipment was not allowed by the California government, such as it is. And yet it's here and it's allowed because apparently our EPA standards are lower. I'm wondering if you could explain why that's allowed when the land isn't officially Fufang's yet?
I'm not aware of any equipment. And Fufang did purchase the land from the private landowners. We were not involved in the land purchase.
So it is a done deal, the land purchase? There's no, there are no more conditions that need to be met?
The land purchase is not, the city was not involved in the land purchase. That was between the company and private owners. We won't start any infrastructure or build anything until, on our side, until they've met the conditions. And they won't be able to build structures either until it's been approved by inspections.
Okay, but they can put their stuff there? They just can't build anything with it?
They're landowners, they can probably put things there, yeah. And they can put...
Okay, so that's, I just wanted to clarify that. So the second issue is extremely troubling. And I, I'll try very hard to summarize it in an even frame of mind. So I saw this program on PBS called Independent Lens, called the One Child Policy in China. And like most of you, we grew up in America, wanting to believe in our leaders, wanting to believe in our government, wanting to believe in our neighbors, that they are good people, they will do the right thing and most of the time. So I was of that frame of mind when I had first heard of this one-child policy. I believe it was in the 80s. And I didn't really realize the magnitude of the truly, truly evil, I think is the best word for it, way they treat fetuses, women, families. It's appalling. Not only that, but the superiority of our culture with respect to fine distinctions and advanced learning is also extremely evident. So I'll attempt to address the most. And I don't think that one can divorce a culture from money. The term blood money exists for a reason. It's biblical. Whoever's watching can Google it. This is a case of blood money. So with respect to the one-child policy, now it's apparently been reversed to two children. However, they will still engage in the practices of disposing of female fetuses as medical waste. They will still treat female children as inferior to male children. In China, the grandparents refuse to be photographed with their female grandchildren because they're not going to carry on the family name. So there's really no such thing as a matriarchy in China. So anyone with a daughter, or who is a daughter, or who is an aunt, or a grandmother, or a mother, effectively, is worthless in China. mother, effectively, is worthless in China. So, I don't want those values in my country, I can't express it any better than that. Right now, I have never been so appalled in my life. I am appalled that we are even considering this deal. I think especially in North Dakota, I happen to be the product of a very matriarchal family, I have generations of strong leaders, women leaders, behind me that have produced me. And I cannot believe that we are even contemplating this deal. Those people are so appalling, their values are so appalling. They don't clean up their own country, they don't invest in clean water, they don't invest in clean land, they don't invest in ethical principles to have a just and moral society. And they have destroyed their country ethically, morally, and environmentally. And why we want to even consider allowing that country in our town is beyond my comprehension. And I don't know how you can carry on with this project, but people need to know what they're really buying here. Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to seven, approval of minutes and bills?
Seven point one is your vendor's list, engineers estimate as presented.
Get a motion to approve the vendor's list. Got a motion from Mr. Weigl, a second from Mr. Sandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Seven point two is the minutes from February 7th and the 22nd.
Motion as is, get a second. Second from Vice President Mock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign, the minutes are approved. Number eight, Mr. Phelan, city administrator comments?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right, moving on to nine, mayor and council member comments, any comments tonight, Mr. Weigl?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Stockler is gone. Mr. Weber, you still online, do you have any comments this evening, sir?
I'm here, no thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, let's see here, we got Mr. Cavami, any comments? Mr. Veen, any comments?
Mr. Goldberg.
Nothing? Okay. All right, Ms. Mock, nothing. President Sandy, nothing. I'm going to wrap it up there, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn. So moved, we got a motion, a second, who gave the second there? Mr. Weigl did. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.